Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say welcome to the Sutter County District 4 Town Hall meeting. I just want to start by thanking Sutter County Superintendent Schools for providing the venue. Thank you Chris Osborne for being here today. So I wanted to have meetings like this, I guess, just right after the election was over. And we get out and make sure that our constituents were informed and make very transparent what was happening in the county. And just make sure that they were part of the process and were there to help make, you know, decisions at different times. Due to COVID, obviously that wasn't possible last year and a half. And now things, you know, opening back up, that here we are today. And I guess our quarrelled will be able to kind of bring everybody to speed on what's happened over the last year and a half. Well, it's basically been reporting on the last year and a half in office. Before I start that, I'd like to again thank each and every one of you for taking the time out of your schedule to join with us. In the back there is where our families lived in for the last 10 years. I want to make a difference. I started off this community by serving in the Planning Commission for the City of Uba City. I served as a charter member for the Economic Development Commission for the City of Uba City. I served on our hospital board for over 10 years, the foundation board, for your right eye. I was appointed to the fair board, Uba City Fair Board and Act National Commission of the 12th District of California. And I served here in Sutter County Board of Education. Originally I was appointed and I ran two election cycles of opposed before running for Sutter County Supervisor. When you're a supervisor, you wear a number of different hats. I'm just here just to remind you of all the different committees or boards that did I'm on in addition to being a board supervisor. Want to serve on the Act and Public Protection Committee, the Area 4 for Agent Government Board, Community Corrections Partnership, FRAC Act, which is the Federal Air Quality Management District, Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, the Regional Waste Management Authority, SAFCO, Sacramento County Area Governance Board, which on that board I also served on. The Lunar Committee, which is the Land Use and Natural Resources Committee, which I'm actually Vice Chair currently. Serve on SASSO, which is our Sutter Animal Services Authority with the Sutter EVA Behavioral Health, Uba City I R C, the Uba City School District Liaison. I'm representative from our board. Serve on Uba Arts and Culture Board, Uba City Food Bank Board, Uba City Transit Authority, Tri-County Juvenile Hall. And then I'm alternate on Education Committee, the Health and Welfare, LAVCO, Oral DM Citizens Advisory Commission, Sabuca Board and Leadership Advisory Committee for Childs. Oh, so, oh, sorry, I'm also Vice Chair of our Board of Supervisors for Sutter County. That was awful. Yeah, no, I'm not very busy farms, only do by trade, but it's pretty to all that. They haven't said we'll diversify land development portfolio. But the people who live here in the third row, she's like possible. She's, she gives me support to, she knows what my heart's like. She knows that I do a good back to our community. So she, without her support, this would not have been possible. So like I mentioned, I've been serving in a number of different capacities. But here, actually, this is something that I aspire to for a very long time. And I'm thankful and grateful to all residents of District 4 for allowing me or awarding me this opportunity to serve. I'm going on to something else here after we have our first presentation from, excuse me.
Thank you, Vice Chair Banks. So I'll step up here to the laptop so I can go through some slides. I wanted to go over county priorities. As you can see, feel free to ask questions at any time. We have a very smaller informal group here, but that's good. So if you have any questions, just feel free to interrupt me. But again, I wanted to go over, Sutter County's doing a lot of outreach right now on community priorities and budget priorities. We have a survey on our website. If you just go to suttercounty.org, there will be a button at the top that you can just click and it'll take you to a survey. We have frequently asked questions on that page, which Chief Shawowitz printed out. So if you'd like a paper copy, we can, we can hand those around as well. So a lot of you are going to probably know some of this information already. But just bear with me for a moment. So about Sutter County, a lot of you know this, one of the original 17, I believe, counties in the state. Founded in 1850, we're about 600 square miles, almost 100,000 people. One, one thing I'd like to point out is 68% of the land in a FEMA flood zone. So the Board of Supervisors recently adopted a new flood map, which actually reduced the amount of flood zone in Sutter County down to 68.2%. The next, this is sensitive, the next closest county is in the 30s. So, and I believe it's Yolo. They have around 35 or 37% of their land in a flood zone. So Sutter County has almost double any other county in California land in a flood zone. So that's important and I'll get to that in a minute. I did want to show and recognize up here, and I know it can be a little difficult to see. Sutter County had done some polling in the beginning of 2020, right before COVID, and then in December of 2021. And overall, you will see satisfaction is very high with Sutter County Fire Department at 86%. Strongly in favor, Sutter County Sheriff's Department at 75. And Sutter County government overall, even at 53%, I feel with COVID and all of the issues that government has gone through over the past couple of years, just being on the plus side of approval is pretty good nowadays. I think the CAO's office is close to 100%, but I didn't want to brag and put that up there, so. So I wanted to show real quick this map of Sutter County, just so we all know where we are and the shape of our county. And this happens to be a flood map that shows the different basins within the county. So, and I'm going to move to another slide that will show you the FEMA flood map. This area west of the bypass is all FEMA flood zone up through here. And almost all of this area, except a couple of little areas, which happen to be where Sutter Point, this is Sutter Point specific plan. The Sutter Point specific plan is planned down in here for some development. The Uba City Basin, where the majority of the people live, with Uba City having, you know, 70,000 of the 99,000 people or close to it. And where the most major development is. I'll go to the next slide so you can see where the FEMA flood zone is specifically for the Uba City Live Oak Basin. So here's two maps. One is showing basically where all the flood zones are. This one, I believe, is a little older, so this is a little more permissive. This is the newest adopted one on the right with the multicolors showing the flood zones in Sutter County. FEMA will not allow development within a FEMA flood zone. You have to develop, I believe, a foot above base flood elevation. And there's a couple of exceptions to that, where you might even have to go a couple of feet higher for some rare exceptions. But moving something up a foot may be doable for a lot of people, even, you know, massive developments. Moving things up 10, 15 plus feet, there's areas here in the Rocklands Basin that are 20 feet underwater. You're just not going to develop there. There are some exceptions for act structures where you can provide venting in a building where water can flow through it. And the county is allowed to give those exceptions. The county is not allowed pro FEMA to give other exceptions, say for residents or business. And FEMA audits the county, I don't know, is it every five years or so? But they can also request special information. Recently, we got an email from FEMA requesting information on a couple of variances that were given. So that's something staff need to respond to. So the board takes that very seriously. We know what happened in Sacramento County a good 10 or 15 years ago. They were fined, I think they ended up paying about $300,000. But FEMA can potentially take away all flood insurance in the entire county. So we want to be very business friendly and allow as much and enable as much development as we can for businesses. And we want people to be able to rebuild their walnut holler or whatever act buildings they have, you know, out in the various areas of the county. But just keep in mind that we can't allow, the board can't allow without risking the entire, every single person in the county that has flood insurance that is at risk of having it taken away. And if FEMA won't issue flood insurance, the only way you can build a new house or a new structure is cash. You can't have a mortgage that's federally backed without the flood insurance if you're in a flood zone. Now, one, one thing I wanted to bring up, and you'll see how this is related in a bit, is Sutter County Fire and issues with the Sutter County budget for fire. Most areas have development, whether it's commercial, industrial, even residential. Though commercial and industrial are what generate your big sales and property tax revenues. They grow over the years and as service needs grow and as county budgets grow and expenses grow, they have the revenue coming in to sustain that. As I mentioned, Sutter County, having 68% of the land in a flood zone, does not have a lot of room for development. Now, you may have seen some things out there. If you're on Facebook, if you're reading the newspaper, there have been claims made about Sutter County. There's been claims made that Sutter County is broke, claims made that Sutter County is going for a sales tax increase, and many other claims made. So I'm going to speak to that a little bit before I get into the details here. One, oh, and that Sutter County is closing a fire station, so that's the other. Sutter County is not broke. Sutter County has always paid its obligations on time and will continue to do so. But if you see something coming on the horizon that you know is going to be a problem, only a fool would not plan for that. And we see, and we've seen over the past couple of years, that we know Sutter County Fire Department, which is CSAF, County Service Area F, which contains the Live Oak Fire Department, that's funded by City of Live Oak, the Fire Department in Town of Sutter and the fire, I should say station, and the fire station on Berry Road, which is called Oswald Two. That funding for that district is funded through that county service area, a small portion of the general property tax and a special fire tax that was established in about 1997, that has no inflator in it. So it is the only way that that special tax increases is if a new structure is built. Because the way that the tax is structured, it's a square footage tax for the most part. The tax is low, it's about two cents per square foot. So if you have a 2,000 square foot house and you're in CSAF, you would pay about $40 a year for fire service. So this is all relevant because last year, last year's grand jury report discussed Sutter County Fire. And here's a few things they said, Sutter County claim of fire. They found outdated equipment, staffing shortages, inadequate funding streams. They made recommendations that Sutter County establish a sustainable capital improvement plan, both for buildings and to purchase equipment. I think the board in responses agreed with basically almost everything that the grand jury had to say. So we're providing this outreach. Parts of the supervisors districts are within the city and mainly relying on Sutter County Fire, or sorry, City Fire, Uba City Fire. Some outside mainly relying on Sutter County Fire Department, CSAF. Regardless, both the city and the county provide mutual aid for each other. So if something were to happen in the future where Sutter County did have to consider closing a fire station, it would impact the city and services that the city provides. And again, I'm not saying we're going there. I wanted to address the rumor that we're closing a fire station. That is not happening. And if something were to happen there, then we would have a lot of public discourse about any decisions and impacts there. So seeing this coming on the horizon, as I mentioned, the Board of Supervisors took several actions over the past couple of years to shore up fire services. So you can see the board included about 2.4 million in emergency allocations in the, in the past two years. They forgave the loan on the fire station in the Town of Sutter that had about $400,000, maybe $450,000 to pay back. They aided in the purchase of two fire engines, funded additional firefighter positions, funded general operating expenses, and purchased personal protective equipment for staff. Every time the Board of Supervisors is providing money to CSAF out of the general fund, means that there's less money for other services. Could be anything from the sheriff's office, library, to development services. I'm pointing at Guadalupe Baker. Yes, Heather? No, not all was general fund, good question. 700 and some odd thousand was general fund for match for the positions. The operating expenses, 140,000 in general fund. Forgiveness of a loan is technically general fund, could have only paid back. We didn't substitute, you know, ARPA or CAREZAC money for it. But there were, one of the fire engines, match, was general fund. But then I think the one fire engine we're purchasing is ARPA fund, so I believe, right, Chief? Yeah. So, yeah, good question. And remember too, that's one time funding, so. So not only does this issue impact Sutter County Fire, but also, well, okay, let me go into this first. Sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. If something would happen in the future where Sutter County said, hey, we have to look at, if we're going to adequately fund fire and have a station open with at least two, two per staffing, meaning two firefighters per shift. We've had one in the past and it just does not work. Our workers' compensation went from something like 60,000 a year, close to, what is it getting up to now? Just under 600,000 a year. And, and one thing that I didn't think about, and maybe the average person doesn't, when I met, I've met with the firefighters a couple of times with Chief. And we've had great meetings and discussions. And one thing they mentioned is when you're one up, everyone can think like, yeah, you can't go into a building. You can't go maybe lift someone without hurting yourself. But what they said really impacts them too, is, you know, they get called out in the middle of the night to an accident and they see some horrific thing with, you know, a child that's been killed in an accident. Doesn't have to be a child, but you know, there's bad things the firefighters and emergency folks see. And then after, they go back to the fire station and sit there. They have no one to discuss it with, no one to vent with. And they just said it's really tough mentally to deal with that on your own. If something were to happen where in the future Sutter County had to close a fire station because we need to adequately staff one or the other, the impacts would be significant. Right now, response times for most of the county are around five minutes. It could go up to as high as, say, 20 minutes, depending on where you are and which station we're closed. I want to be clear, Live Oak, they pay for their own station, so it's either Sutter or Oswald Two. If you look only at call volumes, and there's other considerations to make, but Oswald Two is actually, gets a couple hundred more calls per year than the Sutter Station. So that'd be something we'd have to consider if we ever got to that point. It would impact mutually, as I mentioned. I responded to a fire several months ago only because it was near a county building and I wanted to go and make sure if we needed to help move things out. Chief was there and I was asking him about it. And every engine that Uba City Fire had was at the fire. It was over by, over by 433 Second Street. And Sutter County Fire was there. And Sutter County, I think the Sutter engine was at, is it Station? The one on Pew House, right?
No, it was fire station, like the only engine available for all of Sutter County and.
Okay, so the Sutter engine was the only engine available for all of Sutter County and Uba City because all of Uba City's engines were responding to the fire. Also, I've learned through talking with folks in Uba City that they're often providing mutual aid into Marysville. So they need Sutter Fire to provide backup at times in Uba City. I got that right, right? You'll see closure of the fire station. Without additional funding, the closure of a fire station is a near certainty. Yes, I'm not saying, I'm trying to avoid double talk, that yes, Sutter County pays all of its obligations. Sutter County is not broke. But like I said, if we get to the point where we're considering budget, the closure of a fire station is a near certainty without additional funding. If there's no other revenue sources, then we deal with what we have and we have to shift revenue from somewhere else. Does it reduce deputies on the street? Does it reduce hours in the library? Does it reduce hours in development services that businesses depend on to get and individuals to get building permits? Or, you know, a variety of things. So there are possible impacts to county residents for county services. Here are some of the impacts I mentioned that could be on other county services. Public safety, do we have to reduce the number of sheriffs and deputies patrolling neighborhoods? Road repair, addressing homelessness, and that's a big one. When we conducted our polling, the number one problem that was identified throughout Sutter County, and this was incorporated and unincorporated, so a sample of all areas, all Sutter County districts, addressing homelessness was number one by about 10%, which is pretty significant. Or do we have to reduce services that support our local businesses? So in relation to this, I think it's fair to ask, well, is Sutter County efficient? Are you using your money in the wisest way? You know, what kind of things do you do to save money? Well, a few of the things that Sutter County has done, and we have some of our regional partners here. One, we have Sutter Uba Behavioral Health Services. Sutter County is the only county in California that runs behavioral health for another county. We're the only combined counties in the state that do that. Bi-County Public Health Officer. We went to the state and talked them into letting us share a full-time health officer. There are some counties, if you're under 50,000, that you can have a part-time health officer. But over, you have to have a full-time. We're the only counties that share a full-time health officer. Tri-County Juvenile Hall with Calusa and Uba. Tri-County Child Support Services with Yolo and Calusa. Tri-County Waits and Measures Truck Program with Nevada and Uba County. Bi-County Farm Advisor shared with Uba County. Sutter Animal Services Authority, the city runs animal control for both Sutter County and the City of Live Oak. A homeless camping facility that we share with Uba City so the PD can enforce on illegal camping areas. And of course, Sabuca, which has mightily improved our. What's that? Oh, yeah, well, yeah, it looks like I drew this by hand, but I didn't. I, I couldn't find one with mute in there that was handy. Good point, though, maybe I need to work on that. Chuck, make that out. But, so we have so many partnerships. And we can also show, and I don't have the information, the numbers with us now. But we're, Sutter County is amongst the lowest among counties on workers per capita. So if you look at counties such as Los Angeles, they have 110,000 employees, but they also have 10 million people, so you can work out a ratio there. Sutter County has amongst the lowest. And with counties with a population under, I think it's about 200,000, there might only be one other county that has less employees per capita than we do. So with that being said, we as staff need to make recommendations to the board and the board needs to hear before they make budget decisions. They want to be informed by the opinions of their constituents. You can go to suttercounty.org/feedback or to just the main page where I said, have the button up top and take the survey. That you'll see on there mentions these as the top priorities that were done in some of the polling that were mentioned by Sutter County residents when our official polling was conducted. But polling can only do six or 800 people at a time and we'd love to hear from more. So we will hand out for you, if you don't have it already, the information that Chief Shawowitz has that shows the frequently asked questions. You can see here, easy link to the, to the survey itself. And please feel free to tell anyone who wants to go take it. We've gotten about 250, I think, people so far, which isn't too bad. We know we have 100,000 people, but just trying to get response. And you can, even the town halls, and we have heard at supervisors' meetings that, hey, you need to reach out to the people, you need to have town halls, you need to do things to get the public involved. We're here doing what we can, but it's still, you can see, no matter what district we go to, unless there's something controversial on, maybe that's how we do it. We claim we're going to discuss, you know, something that gets people excited and then we'll, we'll talk about, I'll get to give my boring speech, so. Anyways, that is the information I wanted to provide. And again, please feel free to spread that around, let people know that they can take the survey. the survey. But now I'd love to talk about this or answer any questions you might have before we move forward. We have other information to discuss. Yep?
So first of all, what is, something about response times? The response times down in Uba, what is the, the meaning of the, like the...
The geographic boundaries?
Is that S? Is that enroll?
Gotcha. Chief, do you want to address that? I can give you the mic, so it's for, the question is about response times, emergency response times in the county.
Yeah, so what Steve's talking about is county life. So we have different response times in different parts of the, of the area or service area half. With the station up in Live Oak, we're well under five minutes within the city's area. But when we talk about some of the unincorporated areas with 264 square miles to cover, yes, you may sometimes go higher than that. You may see a 10-minute response time coming out of Sutter to some parts of the southern part of service area half. So majority of the time you're seeing about eight-minute response time out of the engines to make it into the calls. Does that answer your question?
So there's actually like Sacramento, what year was that accident? Maybe back then for like hours?
Uh huh. We hit those about, about two times a month.
So how long, did it go from Berry to that incident for help?
Yeah, so the 99 corridor, really we, we share a lot of the responsibility. We have a lot of mutual aid agreements with Uba City, great partners with mutual aid. Major accidents on the Highway 99 corridor, we're seeing the engines coming up from the south from East Nicholas and Pleasant Road volunteer. On the south part of the county, we participate in mutual aid with Uba City. And then the first engine coming in first on scene most likely is coming from the Berry station and then we backfill or support that incident from southern.
So you're getting some fans for these things happening?
We, yes, yeah, we still get support. They have a pretty strong volunteer program. The problem we have down there, and I kind of went off on a tangent about volunteerism in the United States is it's just not the same as it's always been. A lot of people just don't want to be volunteers or we just don't get the response. What happens down there is we have a lot of committed volunteers down there, a lot of work, nine to five. Majority of the calls that are taking place down there are during those travel times on the freeway. Highway 99, we're taking a lot of traffic from the Placer County side, Sacramento side. You've seen an exceptional amount of more traffic coming up the 99 corridor. So we've had to back them up a little bit and they backed us up. We are working with them to hopefully get a full-time person down there to help with that situation down there, to help with their responses down there. And then also be able to reciprocate some mutual aid to help us a little bit more during the day. We've been going down there a lot in the past year to help them because they've instructed to get those daytime responses as well. So and those response times, now those would be accelerated because they're not within our first in, first do what we call area per the station. So you may see a 25, 30-minute response time for an engine down there for a heart attack, for a vehicle fire, for something like that because they can't get out the door. But we're supporting them.
I said, you're supporting them to me?
Uh, it's mutual aid. So one of the key things about mutual aid is, it's the same thing we talked about with the mutes. And it's a very unique situation and it's a great question when you ask that because it's a very common question that's asked by our services. Why are you giving mutual aid if you're not being paid for it? And we do a lot of mutual aid. Calusa County, perfect example today. We had a vehicle fire, a large truck with a large load of hay up in the mutes, catch fire. Fire jumped the road, got into the mutes. I had engines from Maxwell, Calusa, Williams, Cal Fire, Uba County, an engine from East Nicholas, Pleasant Grove, every single engine in the county, plus volunteer engines that came, Meridian, Uba City, plus Uba City Chief, all out there fighting fire, plus Public Works, and they didn't get paid for that. They come as mutual aid. And it's mutual aid agreements that we share because when we ask for it, we get it. So in turn, with those mutual agreements, we need to be able to provide them services. So that's why that, how that kind of evens out because they do provide services for us. And the East Nicholas, Pleasant Grove volunteers, they're very good at coming up and helping us as well when they can, obviously their volunteer department. But that's how that works. It's a scratch each other back kind of agreement that usually comes out between departments. And, you know, we work really well with Uba City. We're constantly. Yesterday, we were in a structure fire off North Township, which was in the city limits there for what, five hours, I put my engines. I had their chief officer in an engine with us for four hours today. So we definitely get back and forth. It's not really something where we see a cost loss, I guess you could say.
No, they're not putting, basically putting a full-time person at one another. So they have their own cost base. East Nicholas has their own district, Roswell has their own district, Meridian has their own district. So they have their own cost and they get their own revenue to have. Time space, they play.
Yeah, so Service Area C and D, I'm also the chief of Service Area C and D. So East Nicholas, Pleasant Grove Fire Department, I'm actually the chief. We have a volunteer chief down there that works my day-to-day operations for me. It's Marty Vincent, yes, Chief Marty Vincent. And he works for me and kind of gives his my eyes and ears because I can't cover everything. Does a lot of the day-to-day operations, does a lot of things, works closely with me with the development of his budget, looking for future needs for the department. So I do work with him and we do have someone down there. In the past, we've had someone down there Monday through Friday. What we're having, and you just talked about this two days ago, every department in the county and everybody can't even get people to apply right now. Perfect example, and this just happened in Backville Fire, and it's on the top of my head and I believe I mentioned it to Steve. They had a $98,000 a year opening position for a firefighter, nine people in need. They had four people short. $98,000 job, we can't get people to come in and we don't have that kind of pay. So imagine what I'm getting. I'm not getting the people to come in who can apply for a job, let alone that's going to work Monday through Friday and not make a lot of money. Our pay is very low, as stated in the grand jury report. We're categorically about 30 to 40% below for industry standard for fire. So that's, it's a hard amount to apply and that's why Steve was talking about, we was talking. That helped answer your questions. I know we had a problem right there, but...
So there's also some, so how many, how many stations are in Uba City then?
Uba City has fire, one, two, three.
I don't quite know.
One, two, three, four, and seven. One, two, three, four, five, five stations.
Five stations. For across the city, something about people?
Yes.
So there's new development that's planned to go around south on two, four. So I'm trying to get some numbers started for the population, but from what I'm getting so far, it's going to be probably not for that. So I don't know what plan they have for fire on that. Any questions? So just on this half?
Yeah.
Area right there. Oswald's also, or, uh, 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 whole island, is it in the city? It's a living, it's not in the city. Whereas Berry is also very close to that area.
Uh huh. Yeah, so the air station?
You kind of just go ahead and speed that up, put that in every G and then deal with everything else out at a certain point, sorry.
Trying to follow where you're going with that. So are you talking about merging, emerging?
Right, well, those people are going to have that services and there's no, there's nothing down there except for Oswald. Before Oswald starts putting in so much mutual aid because most of what you want for is fire, for emergency services.
Absolutely, yes.
So those people are going to have heart attacks and all that and accidents and stuff too, right? Many kids, they hit the truck. So once they start, start developing there, it'll be a lot of mutual aid. At some point they're going to have the decision, they're going to decide either put in a, in one or take over something like Berry.
Yeah, and I thought it was a decision, I think, for, you know, down the road. I mean, that's a possibility.
What we need to do is just make something that works until either that, that happens. So then there's the funding for that point?
Yeah, and I don't want to speak to Uba City. I have a great relationship with Uba City Fire Chief, Alexander. What's that?
Yeah, he left, right?
The fire, the fire chief?
No, it's fine. I'm just going to say, I'm sure they have a plan for that, for the boat steward area. I'm not familiar with what it is. We just don't want to speak to it because it's Uba City Fire. And we want to be clear that we're talking about Sutter County Fire. If, if, when I was mentioning, if at some point a fire station had to close, it would not be a Uba City Fire station. We just want to be very clear about that because there has been some confusion out there.
And not by, it's also not by?
And not by, they, they pay for them.
I mean, it's that, for me.
Right. And that's a, that's a big if, you know, we would do everything we can to keep that open. For example, it's very expensive to keep one extra firefighter on per shift, which in the recommended budget that will come out next month, to maintain that two-up staffing that I was talking about in those two stations is going to be about $860,000 for one year. So because you're talking 24/7, you know, having another person. So, yeah, just wanted to address that. Any other questions?
I have a question about it.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, I will hand it back over to Supervisor Banks. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have another visitor. We have Drew Stresser, our Levy District One General Manager, who's joined us. Thanks so much, Drew. So actually, guys, we only have this, whether you tell seven o'clock, so you have to not joke. Right, we're going to stay as long as he is, we have questions. Right now, we're on this agenda that we have, we're at recent accomplishments. And I just want to thank Stephanie Condon again for being instrumental in the former Second Street Homeless Encampment and the cleanup, and the efforts that their department made. It wouldn't happen without them. They did a tremendous job and I just want to thank you. Thank you so much. And dramatically reduced homelessness in the river bottoms as well by that cleanup. Over the past four years, various set of kind of programs has helped over 1,200 formerly homeless individuals to find permanent housing. But obviously, homelessness remains to be an issue throughout California. And we're trying to look at it from every angle we possibly can to keep the identity safe. We're really working on a, or we certainly worked on a plan with the National Park and the Sutter County Resource Conservation District to take back the river. Take back the river to create a parkway from the Tenth Street Bridge out past Shanghai Bend. After doing another online poll, the community has huge support, strong support for it as long as it remains safe for use. We received a statewide award from CSAT, California State Association of Counties for our initiative in the operation of Better Way, the homeless shelter. The homeless shelter has served over 250 people since it first started in September of 2019. And more than 100 individuals have now had permanent housing since, since the very beginning. And also, we received the CSAT's recognition for the shelter and they're using it as a model for other counties to follow. We have neighbors of Harmony Village, which was formerly the Baymont Hotel, have expressed a great appreciation for the work of Habitat for Humanity in operating the subsidized housing project that has provided permanent housing for over 60 people. For those who don't know, the Harmony Village is a 62-room affordable housing complex where residents pay no more than one-third of their income for rent and utilities. And this is about housing for veterans, seniors, individuals with disabilities and many others that were homeless. Counteracting, they're having 99, projecting downtown Live Oak. I know some of the trucking folks aren't too happy with the curbs and there's a lot of flat tires, a lot of people that are curbing their wheels and that out there, but, but to say the least, the residents are, I think, they're happy that it's been completed and they could obviously use that, that corridor there for, which is a lot more safer, is a lot safer for the pedestrians and the motors. Recently, Sutter County has achieved 200-year flood protection in most of the urban area, first community to do so. And we continue to work with the state on finding ways to bring the Uba City basin into, including Sutter and Oswald, and to the same level of protection. We recently approved the updated housing law for Sutter County's general plan and its land-based settlement for general plan to provide direction for future growth and also to areas reserved and ag lands. Through Savevault, we've secured $100,000 grant to, to evaluate and look for locations for future truck yards in the unincorporated area for, not only for truck yards, but also for potential clean energy truck, infrastructure development, maybe fueling stations for hydrogen and electric fueling for, for the truck industry. We have over 2,500, 3,000 trucks in this community and we have a tire-driving industry to make sure that we, we find the areas to, to park their trucks, fuel their trucks, service their trucks and accommodate for that industry. We increased our revenues in Sutter County by accelerating the payoff for the pension liability by adding a million dollars a year to that payoff. We continue to support public safety. We've purchased a new fire truck and equipment for our sheriff's department. Some current initiatives that we, we have, the county is currently running a survey that goes back to, to Steve's, where his slide first started off. You go back to our community needs and to see what, what the folks, what we were in in the previous slide. Homelessness continues to be an issue in every community, but, but right now we're working great with, with the city, Uba City. I think this is something that did, I don't know, what it was like in the past, I want to report to what's happening while I've been serving, but it's been a great partnership and trying to work and collaboration for an issue that is, that is mostly within the city limits, not out in the unincorporated areas, but, but understanding that this is a problem that we need to tackle together. And, and so, sorry, our Vice Chair, I just want to give them, you know, a shout out and kudos to, to their council for, for partnering with us or understanding what their responsibilities are, what their roles are in this effort as well. Sutter Point Groundbreaking is going to take place later on this month, or there's a scheduled ceremony to take place. 7,500 acres in South Sutter County. Houses, economic development, commercial, residential development that's going to happen, industrial development in the south part of Sutter County. We're all looking forward to that, especially the development component. The Board continues to consolidate the departments and we're trying to put 2 million vehicle miles a year in 20 locations. We're trying to consolidate that with the Kmart facility. Still, there's, there's a lot to be done. There's a lot of, I guess, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of things in the works right now, a lot of different options. We have, unfortunately, the cost of construction, everything has gone up probably five times, you know, since that acquisition was completed. And so we have to kind of think outside the box, but, but still, we're continuing to, to look at the opportunity for Sutter County. Let's see here, we've got, sorry, the last underway with the groundbreaking for the juvenile hall facility, the Tri-County Juvenile Hall facility. And now we're getting to future, future plans. We're again looking forward to the, to the, we've got enablement of economic development. Look forward to seeing what 2020, or sorry, 2022 has in stock for, for Sutter County. Again, economic development with the groundbreaking of Sutter Point is going to bring a lot of creative amenities and a lot of tax dollars to, to our community. The city, Uba City and Sutter County, they have a tax area agreement for their boat steward specific plan and that much of my development. So, so kudos to, to, to our board members, Supervisor Flores and Conan, who served on that, an exceptional job for our CDO, Steve Smith, who none of it would have been possible without his leadership and thank you for that. We perform various road maintenance projects in S- various road maintenance projects in Sutter County, just, uh, uh, and then a few of them off. We have some road ceilings and road overlay projects. Some of the roads we maintain include Senar, Sandmore, Franklin, Pacific, and Housley. Um, also within the, our district, the city of Uba City is going to be doing, um, a joint, um, joint project on, on Sandmore because the county is responsible for the west side of the Cat Size, and the city is responsible for the east side of the Cat Size. And it's hard to see, you know, it's taken some time for them to be able to come together and finish that, but they will be, um, working on that here shortly. Um, Walton Avenue widening will, is going to take place here shortly. And also, there's going to be on the intersection of Walton and Cherry. There'll be a lighted intersection there. Um, just to give a few things happening in District Four. Um, then we have, in Southern County, we have, uh, always focused on flood risk and, and, um, you know, with the completion of forty-four mile slurry wall project that was in the West Bank of the Feather River, they were continuing to work with, um, smooth down the Sutter bypass itself, looking to see what you will do. So, so the most important thing is public safety in any community and, and we need to make sure that our, our community is safe and, and, um, we need to improve the flood risk for the Uba City Basin. For those who don't know, that, um, they, with the re-districting, now District Four actually reaches out to a levy. And, um, with the help of Heather, she made the request and, and our re-districting meetings, and every county supervisor should, should, um, touch a levy. And, um, and, um, I, I look forward to, to, um, well, not that I wasn't advocating for that levy, or all levies around Sutter County, um, before, before the, um, before the district change, but, but it's nice to, to be able to advocate, um, for, for that and for flood protection as well. That, um, yeah, so we've got the, the, uh, Bridge Street widening is, is taking place. Just last week, they did a, a ground breaking there. Um, the library is, is reopened. Um, the remodeling went on for some time because of COVID, things were slowed down. Um, it was great to see them reopen. Hopefully, we'll have a, an event sometime, you know, where everybody can get together and, and have better sense of what all services they provide there. Just a couple of updates, um, on some projects that are, that are underway in, in Sutter County or in Uba City and District, and District Four. There's, um, some maps that were, were approved or provided to the city, from the city of Uba City. There's a Henson Ranch, which is on Elmar Arena and Highway Twenty. We have a Springfield Suites, which is a ninety-one-room, um, hotel that'll be, be built behind Meeks Lumber. Uh, Uba Crossing, Uba Crossing is three, um, single-family lots that is on the, um, on Franklin Road, right in front of, of Windville. There's a, Bane's gone, the subdivision that's on, on Walton, just behind the old, Golden Pacific Bank. Like I mentioned earlier, the Walton Avenue widening will be taking place shortly. We have the new O'Reilly Auto Parts, um, store right there on Cecil and Lincoln Road, the East Sandmore Estates, the, the twelve small family homes that is east of Sandmore, um, the homes that Interwest has developed. Um, then recently, there was a, when they had a section apart of what was the Lincoln East Pacific Plan, the Laughgo last week brought in the, um, the township that goes from Walton to, to George Washington, from Bow to Lincoln. And, um, with that, there's going to be, uh, the West Sandmore Estates will be ninety-five single-family homes, um, on the corner of Sandmore and, and Bow. And, um, a lot of exciting things happening in, in Uba City and Southern County in specific. And I just want to thank each and every lady for, for coming out, uh, today. Most importantly, I want to give a shout out to our staff, I think, the support. I mean, the, each one of the individuals that are up here, you know, some that are out in the crowd, that it's been, you know, I've only been in this position for a year and a half, but what I see you guys do day in, day out, that I, I think is important for the constituents of Southern County or, you know, not just District Four, but, but everybody, you know. We have an amazing team, an amazing team. And, you know, what our schedule went over earlier, earlier, is, um, it's not, um, there's challenging times, you know, we're looking at our budget and our proposed budget, where there's a three-point-two million dollar hole, you know, budget hole that, that we're going to try to, to, um, adjust and, and see where we come from the needs to support, to support our staff, to support the employees and, and all the services that are provided in, in Southern County. But, um, I think it's important for, for everybody to know that how fortunate we are for, for each one of you. And I just want to say I'm thankful and grateful for, for all the work that you all put in and you guys do above and beyond your role. And so, thank you. Um, having said that, but again, I just want to thank Superintendent Schools, thank you, Chris Osborne, you know, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to use this venue next door. Um, yeah, I think they've been quiet, so we'll probably share some of our cookies with them as well. But on your way out, please feel free to, to, um, take some more, um, take some bottles of water home and some cookies. If there's any questions, yeah, if there's any other questions, then, then we're here. We'll stick around until any questions are asked or answered, sorry.
All right.
(laughing)
Well, you said that Sandmore, the county's, like, that you also just said that it's been recently incorporated in the county. So now the city, which part of Sandmore are we talking about?
So the project, so right now, the, so the west side of Sandmore is still in the county?
Where?
From, from Cherry, from Cherry all the way up past Bow Road to that?
No, they're just incorporating, like, in Bow, that whole spot there in the county.
So it's, so it's just passed by Laughgo last week. This is a project that has been underway for some time.
Is it paying for it to continue?
It's not just to continue to pay for it. It's a project that has been very, very working.
So you're requiring some decisions?
Yes, so you're requiring, right, please, for the, for the...
So I want to pay the principal engineer for development services. And so, yes, we have a, um, a road overlay project where we are going to be improving the road from Nand, um, to just north of Lincoln Road. And so I have a here that I can share with you if you'd like. And so, um, as Supervisor Banks mentioned, yes, the west side is, is county and the east side is the city within the city limits. And so, um, that was, uh, put out to bid. The, the plans were adopted, uh, by the board, um, I believe in their, end of March or in April, and they were out to bid. And so we've received the bids and have, and we're in the process of awarding the contract for it. And so the city, we've been working with them. We have a great working relationship with the city staff. And so we're coordinating with them on projects where we have situations like this, where, um, our boundaries meet. And so that's one of the projects that we're working on together.
Well, I'm not making it as a progress, it's a progress.
Okay.
But the project is outside of the city and then the north side is the county. So that would have to go down.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so we can, we can look at the map and then, okay.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions?
Any questions?
No. (laughing) No, but I, I just wanted, I wanted to mention something that, you know, when we were, during the campaign, going door to door, asking folks what their, their needs with the law, that was potholes. Everybody's complaining about, we've got potholes. People are speeding, there's excessive speeding in our district, you know, and then, um, so right now with, with the Walton widening, they're going to fix that. The potholes are, you know, begun on Walton. They're going to actually, we're going to put, uh, there'll be sidewalks that are going to be on the, um, the west side, uh, literally from Franklin, from, oh, from Franklin out to, to Cherry. And there'll be a lighted intersection at Cherry and Walton. And so there's some exciting stuff that's going to happen. At the beginning, Sandmore, all potholes on Sandmore, that, um, we're still working with, um, we're looping in the department to see if, um, you know, speed bumps or some type of, of diversion, some way to slow people down, especially around the Happy Park area. Neil's been working, they're trying, again, these things go back to the city working with the county, right? And they, and they have to work in collaboration to make things happen. We have two gentlemen here with law enforcement, the, the, what seemed really easy for us to say, yeah, put a speed bump, it'll slow things down. But the wear and tear that it does on our engines, right, it's, it, it just destroys them, right? And, and for, you know, whatever we're talking about earlier, you worry about response time, or everything, you worry about response time, but that slows down whenever, it slows, the emergency vehicles down whenever they need to respond. So again, I mean, I think there's tracks that are being held right now between the city and the county to see what we can do in those areas to address those issues. And, um, then once we have that, well, coming back out to report to the constituents of, you know, all my neighbors in District Four.
And show you how we set it up. He showed it on you. So, let's see what, what he does.
Benny.
Benny.
Twenty thousand dollars for now. The day, the day.
Thank you. Thank you all. Is that it? Anybody want something? The, I'll go to someone else.
I was just going to extend it down.
If anyone has questions that are pertinent or relevant to the sheriff's office, I'm happy to take those.